Okay. Good evening, everyone. This is the Town of Douglas Planning Board Meeting for Wednesday, May 27, 2020. The meeting is being recorded and available for remote participation, video conferencing, and screen sharing. Time is 7:06. And the first item on the agenda is business reorganization. And we're gonna postpone that. We have a full board, hopefully.
Yeah.
7:00 PM, public hearing continued. Cooper's Town Road Realty Trust, application for definitive subdivision residential compound Hawk Hill Farm. And Byron's on the line, remote.
Okay. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Yeah, all right, all right.
Sure, sure. Uh, thank you. Um, we left off last week with the question about the eligibility of, um, of the applicants for the residential compound, um, bylaw. And, um, and so we've created a letter that we conveyed to Bill Cundiff. He conveyed it to Town Council, and Town Council, um, responded. Um, so I think, uh, now we can kind of continue the discussion. I think we have all the, all the facts we need to discover. So, uh, as we stated at the last planning board meeting, um, we consider the land in common ownership for the purpose of the regulation, um, because the applicants are the Schlesman and Chapman families. The land is owned by the applicants, either individually or collectively, um, and has been in their ownership since 2000. The largest section of the land, uh, today is owned by them jointly. Um, and there are two individual lots that, um, they jointly convey to each individual family. So while the parcels can be considered in separate ownership, we believe that, um, at least for the purpose of, uh, the subdivision control law, um, they can be considered in common ownership. Because of the unique nature, these people have owned these, this property for 20 years. They've, um, worked collectively on it. Um, they're applying together, um, for the application. Um, and, um, and I think this is a case, you know, obviously the board has some, um, latitude to make a decision on it, but I think that this is a case where their ownership really is in harmony with the, with the intent of the bylaw, um, where, you know, it's not, they're not developers, they're not buying up a land to put it up over there, so divided. I mean, they own it, um, they wanna stay there, they wanna have their retirement homes there, and, um, they're just looking at, uh, to do this as, as, um, you know, a method of doing that. Um, and, um, well, they also kind of bring in the, um, points raised by Town Council, um, his response, um, for instance, the term common ownership is generally viewed to mean not only those abutting properties that are in the exact same ownership, but also those properties that are, you know, that are related to ownership and common control. And I think we qualify in that case. And he contrasts it, um, through a different situation. He says, uh, "It is possible that some might interpret this provision more literally and only apply it to situations where the ownership of properties is the, is exactly the same." Uh, while such an interpretation may be defensible, it is not, in his opinion, the most persuasive interpretation. Um, so I think, I think, um, I think that lends support to, uh, to our, um, position that, uh, it is in common ownership and is eligible, uh, for the residential compound, um, regulations.
Before we get too far along, could I have a quick roll call so that everyone at the, at home knows that we're here? So, we'll just go around the circle.
Mike Recko, here.
Mike Zoker, here.
Aaron Sokrout, here.
Jake Schultzberg, here.
And Tracy Sharkey. Okay. Um, Bill, do you wanna kind of go over where we're at right now?
So Byron summed it up pretty accurately. The Byron, as requested by the board, submitted his opinion on, uh, the interpretation of the bylaw, uh, not bylaw, regulation. We forwarded that to Town Council. Town Council reviewed that, and Town Council gave me a first one-sentence reply. So I called them up and I said, "Hey, can you give me a little more than that?" And so he followed up with that more lengthy reply.
So the last reply was the May 21st, at 3:22?
Yeah, they were both on May 21st.
Yeah. The more than one, one sentence?
Yeah, the one that's more.
Okay. All right. So, board, um, so at this time, we really need to determine if we would consider your argument as either a waiver or an argument to avoid the common ownership from the regulation? Is that the case?
What's the statute in, we did it last time. What's the statute on how many years is it supposed to be held in common ownership?
Uh, it's a date.
What date?
May 26, 2009.
So they follow.
Eleven years ago.
Yeah, so they've had it since 2000, they say.
All of them since 2000 or any since 2009?
Well, what I would suggest is, as part of their application, they're supposed to provide documentation.
Yeah, so just provide that. I concur with what's going on here.
Because, I mean, it's pretty literal when there's a date. You know, there was talking about something literal, being taken literally, about common ownership. But a date is not, I mean, it's literal, it's what it is, it's a date. And so I think one of the things we should know, that they're all held before 2009. All these, you know, we need to have that documented, like you just said, I'm being redundant, but my point is, there's a statute on dates. You wanna know that, that's all.
Yeah, I can, uh, speak to that. Um, the land was bought jointly by Mr. Schlesman and Mr. Chapman in 2000. And the individual lots were, uh, conveyed by them to each of them individually in, I think, 2001 and 2002, and the ownership has been the same since then.
So it's just two parties we're talking about that own it?
Yeah. Yeah, it's four people now because it's, it's the husband and wife of both families.
So like Bill said, though, the documentation, that shouldn't be too hard to get, right?
Break it down.
So, this, so it's on file. You know what I mean? That way, it's supposed to have it. If Bill has it, then it's on file, and we know it is what it is.
But one residential compound's already been created out of this parcel?
No.
No?
No.
It's a common driveway, right?
It, it's not even a common driveway.
Not more than, okay.
Driveway.
So.
All right.
But there's only one house on it?
There's two houses on two separate lots. Do both of them, are they both served by the one driveway?
Yes.
But they're still on shared property.
Like a common drive?
It's not a common.
So Byron said, they wanna retire to these houses, and they're not developers. So what are they not developing? Are they proposing more houses to retire to? Are they selling those houses? I just wanna know, I mean, retirement, do you retire in your own house? Or you build another house, tear your house down because it doesn't have doors?
I think we just have to look at the anti, of the regulations.
Right, right.
We don't really, they could tell us anything. It's, they, it's just the regula, yeah, it's, I'm trying to get a handle on exactly the intent of the regulation and what could possibly, um, you know, happen in the future if, if we were to.
It sets a precedence.
Yeah, so, so we've got the, the different entities, right?
So.
Trying to refresh my, I'm trying to refresh my.
The Schlesmans, there's the.
Individually.
And then there's a trust which is accommodation of the two. So technically, there's three different owners of four parts. Is that correct, Byron?
Yeah, I colored it up here, um, the green. Uh, the green outline is, uh, the land that was bought jointly as, as one unit, um, in 2000, I think in 2000, late 2000. And, um, then they conveyed this one here to the Schlesmans and this one to the Chapman. And of course, they're all, the Schlesmans and the Chapmans are the applicants for the project.
And that was in 2009? Is that what you're saying?
Before 2009.
Board, any other questions? I guess the entity issue is what needs to be proven as not applying to the regulation.
Yeah, and the definition of common ownership, I think. I mean, you've got, what, four, four entities owning, three, or three entities owning four parts?
Right.
So, so the only thing I want the board to be cautioned about is, you know, while you don't set precedent, this could be pointed to by some other project that comes down the road.
Yeah, I just, I just said that, like, two minutes ago. So when Aaron was trying to talk about the retirement thing. Yeah, I think we just need clarification. I mean, Town Council is saying that that's not the most persuasive interpretation. So I don't know if we should keep carrying this through. And if the evidence that they come back that everything was held before the common ownership as of May 26, 2009, would that even matter?
Could I clarify one thing?
Sure.
Okay. Um, so I think what Town Council, uh, was saying was that to say that they were in separate ownership is not the most, uh, most convincing interpretation. It's a little hard to, you have to read it a few times or it's clear what it is.
More literally and only apply it to situations where the ownership of properties is exactly the same. So where it's common is exactly the same. So red is red, that's the same, that's common. That's how I'm reading that.
Yeah, if I can repeat what he said again. The term common ownership is generally viewed to mean not only those abutting properties in the exact same ownership, but also those properties that are, are related ownership in common control. I think that's what he was getting at in his bit.
Ultimately, alternate ownership and otherwise.
So can you speak on the common control portion? Because they can, all the entities can act on their own. So that's not common control. If one wanted to do one thing, then they could do it.
Yeah, they can act on their own in relation to the, uh, to the individual lots, but they are acting jointly with this application.
Right, but you, you know where I'm going with that. When you're deeding a property, they, they don't need to get a sign off like a trust from the others, so they're not all in common control.
Right, right, yeah. I, I, um, they're not, but you know, yeah, I think, I think the application, you know, they are applying for all of it in common, so I, yeah, I think that can be interpreted as in common control since they're co-applicants in the.
Well, we're talking about the land, not the app. Yeah, we're talking about the land, not the application. Is there anything else in the, um, regulation that relieves them from, or clarifies anything to do with the common ownership? Like any other reference?
That's the only section that it brings it up.
Okay.
Oh, man.
He calls, if I may, just, I'm sorry. It, the, our attorney says, "The threshold matter, the term common ownership is a well-worn phase, phrase." So I, I mean, he's, I mean, if he's suggesting that, that what it says isn't what it says because it's worn out, it's been used, and it's like, like a common term, I don't know. I mean, it just sounded very much.
The definition is pretty well-accepted across the board as the same definition. And I think the common control is where we should focus, not necessarily the names and the people, the individuals involved in each of the ownerships.
I mean, I guess less of a problem if it was all held and commonly before a certain date, and maybe the date, if they can hit that threshold, maybe that's something. I just don't, I just don't know, I don't know enough, you know.
Yes.
Yes.
Kevin.
Would it make sense to continue this to another meeting and have Town Council for, or a Land Council actually sitting?
Yeah.
Trying to grasp what he's trying to say right here and saying it.
It's important, yeah.
Yeah.
So, 'cause it seems, you know, just an observance, it seems like everybody's kind of hung up on, well, what does the lawyer mean by this? It's usually easier to find that out when he's sitting here and say, "What do you mean by that?"
Yeah. Byron, even with that?
Good idea.
As far as his interpretation? Okay. We can get him on the line right now.
If you guys are anything like me, I'd rather just let the lawyer talk.
Yeah, at times.
Other than our regular Town Council, I don't know about Land Council, but lawyers just confuse me every time they're back.
Well, my interpretation, and this is such an interpretation.
Your interpretation of interpretation.
The law's about as clear as mud, so.
Yeah, I just don't know. If there's anything else in the, the residential compound that could help the situation.
I wrote to see if there were any definitions in that or, or the zoning bylaws, and I didn't see any definition for common ownership.
Yeah. While we're waiting, did we have a new or an old letter about that easement and the landlauking?
That's a, that's a new one.
Is it new?
I put it in the back. I believe it came in the day after your meeting. Yeah, I saw that.
Okay, so, Jordia from May 13th. Byron, are you familiar with the Travis McCollin lot? That it's about 40 acres? And they have, they're looking to maybe have an easement? That's number three, I think? Parcel three?
Oh, uh, we were talking about the, the abutters that were requesting right away?
Yes.
Yeah, I haven't investigated, investigated that thoroughly. Um, I think, I think what needs to happen is, um, um, we need to look back at the ownership and see if they were in common ownership at one point. Um, if they were, then there would, uh, there could be a prescriptive easement, unwritten easement, uh, for access. Um, if not, then it would be a matter of whether our clients, you know, were interested in, in conveying an easement, which I'm not sure if they are, but, um.
Okay.
The first thing I would do is look into, look into old deeds and see what came out of who and the chain of title.
Okay.
Actually, um, if I may, this is Travis McCollin.
Yes? Name and address, Travis?
Sorry?
What is your address?
Um, I actually own that 40 acres.
What's the address?
Um, that they were talking about? It doesn't have a number.
Okay.
Because it's, it's about, it's between them and the, um, state forest.
Okay.
Trust me, I get issues with it all the time with, with the tax bill. Yeah, that, the 40 acres is been in the family since 1980, and we had access up the road given by, um, Chapman before he sold it in 2000. And it ended up being a major issue, and they couldn't find anything that's filed as a prescriptive, uh, right away in, you know, the paperwork that was done. So what I'm basically looking for now is the town has a value that I'm getting 20,000, and since 2000, I technically can't step foot on my own property. So I'm just basically trying to get where the board is aware that, you know, when landmarked back there, pay good taxes on it, and if there's anything with the board can do to help out to unlandmark that, it would be greatly appreciated.
Okay, all right. We have it on the record in our pocket, so if we get to that point, we will certainly see what we can find out on that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jay said sure, so he's, I don't know if he's gonna show up here or call in or what.
Oh, okay, great. All right, let's just give, um, yep, I see him. Hi, Jay. You might not have, see him on the bottom? Oh, does he have to be let in?
Yeah, he has to be let in, I think.
He's on the very bottom.
I don't wanna spread my nasty germs.
One moment, Byron, we're just waiting for Jay to be let in.
But just text him, tell him we're just, he gets.
He probably can hear us, he just can't speak.
Yeah, I don't know. If you can hear us, send us a sign.
Yeah, he can, he can hear us. How many acres is the Schlesman Trust? That large parcel?
The large piece is 40 acres.
So that is in common ownership, right? Okay. But it doesn't have a right-of-way? Is that what that is? I'm playing catch-up here, so.
I don't know if the, the larger piece has a separate right-of-way across the other ones.
So you couldn't do a residential compound on just the 48 acres as the common owner?
Um, not really. It's, um, it doesn't really have, uh, very good access.
Okay.
Maybe just slide them differently.
He's in there, but he can't hear or speak.
You wanna, you wanna click on him? Good job. Um, if you go up top, can you, is there a waiting room on the tippity-top? Under Kevin? Nope. Can you invite Jay to come in?
What about those three dots? Maybe you get to some. Go to the next dot, go to the next dot, the first one's removed.
No, that's, no, they're all removed, yeah.
This is why we have to have Kevin.
There should be some sort of waiting room that would allow you to, more option?
No. A little chicken's stuck in his mouth.
You got it. Just keep, go click, double-click on Jay, maybe. Oh, you know what? I think Jay needs to turn his microphone on, access. 'Cause everybody else showed up automatically. Like Byron was already on.
Those people are muted.
No, Jay just needs to press his microphone or his computer, allow for the access. No, no.
Invite participants.
No. Chat with Jay and send him a message to turn his, his microphone on. Go to people. Yep, there you go. And then go to Jay. Double-click him, can you double-click him?
We don't know how to get him in.
He can't hear or speak.
Is he on a Chrome browser?
He's, he's right there in the, he's.
He's in the list.
Jay, uh, on his computer, he needs to make sure he's using Chrome, 'cause it has all the plugins and stuff for it. It's the only browser that it accepts.
He can phone it, too.
Yeah, he can dial in, it's a calling number. Sorry about that.
I tried.
Did he sanitize, too?
Yeah.
You did?
It's right there.
Do you want the dial-in number?
He, he's, he's trying from his iPad, so.
All right, they may ask him to download an app, is a spaces app?
Yeah, I'm just gonna send him, he's got it on his computer.
Oh, okay. Got Rod and Avaya stuff. If I find somebody that works there, I'll give them a piece of my mind.
Looks like you're the only one using this phone, too, 'cause every single line says Kevin on it. So all the technology.
Belongs to me.
Yeah. So pretty much we're dead in the water, if we don't have you, if you're under the Jeep.
Well, I donated that to that, it was my demo account.
Oh, okay.
When we opened the EOC, I donated that to down here.
Oh, nice.
So at least we can get call-in and stuff like that.
Yeah, well, I was like, how do I pick this up? Why does it say Kevin Morrison every single thing? Every single line?
I'm super important.
I, I was like, maybe I could call him from this phone, I don't know.
Didn't we say a little bit ago that it would be nice if he were here? And that maybe he should be invited here? So it kind of maybe implies this whole thing out of his shuffle off until he shows up in person.
Well, now we've got him on. Oh, he's coming.
Yeah.
Mack and I just came on.
See if I can, do I see him?
He might have changed his.
Yeah, he's changed, gone to another computer or something, I think.
Yeah, anything that's like an iOS device? You want to just download your app and use that to come in? But if you're using one of those PCs, like, the only thing we were plugging before was Chrome.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. It's looks, 'cause I do a lot of Zoom, so it's like totally, it's kind of like opposite.
Yeah.
So you're like, okay, where do I find everything? Turn my microphone off, that's like the most important thing in your video.
It takes a little while for you to get used to it. So, 'cause before, when I was with Comcast, I used Teams for everything.
Yep.
And then Avaya's like, no, this is our product, and the more I get used to it, the better I like it.
Mm-hmm.
It's just that learning curve.
Yeah. Yeah, where all the buttons are.
And Zoom is kind of like, it just became a thing out of like, no one.
Yeah, never even heard of them before this.
Yeah.
So they like the new Skype.
Well, everybody hates Teams, dude. Like, everybody is, like, it slows down your computer, everyone uninstalls it automatically.
It's, um, it's a neat platform if it's administered right.
Yeah.
But if you don't have anybody keeping an eye on it.
Yeah, I know.
It becomes a big resource hog.
Yeah.
So.
Is there a way you can just call in on this line?
You can, yeah.
Well, you can actually.
Right there.
Yay.
Hey, Jay.
Hi, Jay.
Can you hear us?
I think he does.
I do.
Oh, perfect.
There he is.
So we're just on the Hawk Hill Farm residential compound with the common ownership issue in our regulations, and we were just looking for some clarification on, uh, your email that you had sent, the second one on May 21st.
All right, so I think I, if I remember the issue, the properties in question clearly were in common control, if not literal common ownership. And the question was the interpretation of the term common ownership as it applied to the limitations and purpose of that bylaw.
Yes.
And I, as I recall correctly, I don't have the email in front of me, uh, the, um, my conclusion was that the most likely and strong interpretation of that was that it meant mirror what we know to be kind of common ownership in other zoning and planning contexts, to which not only literal common ownership, but common control as well, other than the bylaw, the previous bylaw can be equally presumed as it is. So, um, I also concluded that, um, it was not unreasonable to argue that it should be literal in order for that limitation to apply. And you. in order for that limitation to apply and use those exact terms. And I think you can make, you can make a defensible argument either way. But I thought the stronger argument would be what we know to be, um, uh, common ownership and control under similar legal, uh, use and planning standards.
So could you clarify on the "in control" portion of your statement?
So the, the rotates is Tracy really relate to, um... So when some of the... It started coming out, it talked about, um, common ownership and control in the subdivision context. Where there's, uh, say, for example, you can only, uh, A&R. You can only get zoning protection for up to three in our lots. Or somebody can take parcels, common ownership under the separate or common on exception under Chapter 48, Section 6. What started to happen was that people were checkerboarding properties, and putting them in different ownership for the sole purpose of having to worry about the limitations of the intent behind those statutes. So what the courts ultimately decided was that even though, um, it may be literal different ownership, a husband-wife, a trust, and a share of a trust or something like that. If there was a common thread of control, and they were going to apply the limitation. Uh, more legitimate cases had said that, hey, you really have to show that this common control, that mere, uh, familial relationship might not be enough. Here are the facts as they were presented to me. Hopefully, if there was no question that there was common control, if not exact common ownership. And so I mirrored the cases from other similar, um, statutes and usages and applied it to bylaw for that interpretation. Although noting that it would be defensible for you to go and kind of counter to that established law and kind of make a rule, so to speak, as to how this group was going to interpret, um, its own bylaw. Either way, the difference in the interpretation of their own bylaw. So that's how I came down on that issue.
Okay. Thank you, Jay. The board, do you understand what he's saying?
I'm confused now.
So pretty much what he's saying is the way that it's laid out and the way it all started, pretty much the intent... They're trying to... They are kind of staying within the bylaw that we have at this time?
Jay, that's to you.
Oh, I'm sorry. So was it a question or just...
Yeah, the question to you is, so in, in your kind of judgment, where they're all combined, the way that this is particularly laid out, is kind of staying in the intent of the bylaw that we have written right now?
So, and I didn't get all of that. You were breaking up a little, or the connection's not so good. But as it was presented to me, and I read the bylaw, these two lots share a common thread of control.
Okay.
That there is commonality in decision-making and day-to-day control of these lots. And, um, I felt that that was sufficient if you were going to interpret the term "common ownership" in the way that I suggested and in the same way that other land use statutes use that term. And the way the courts have interpreted that term.
Okay.
Um, literally, we're going to the intent of what they're trying to prevent.
Yeah. All right, thanks. So in other words...
Thank you, Jay.
Pretty much saying, as long as we have documentation of when this all really took place...
Right.
Then if that's the case, and we have proper documentation of that, then their intent of meeting this bylaw seems like they do.
Yes.
As long as we have documentation of when this all transpired before 2009.
When... So you can... I think if, if I recall the bylaw correctly, kind of go back and look at that measuring date and see what was happening there. Now, look, any applicant is also free to demonstrate that. Look, there may be common, uh, some familial relationship, but these lots are truly independent in their day-to-day control, the day-to-day decision-making, and it's no common interest. So it's, it's become... In the cases that have followed those early cases in the kind of 70s, 80s and 90s, it's become very fact-intensive. So on to disregard the possibility that the applicant here couldn't demonstrate that. As helpful from the applicant's own email indicated that there was more or less an admitted common, uh, uh, threat, so to speak, between the control of these particular lots. So it struck me that as applied to the, this fact pattern, that would be my likely conclusion if I was asked to determine what was the most reasonable interpretation of this, um, bylaw as applied to the facts. But don't forget, I based that on just essentially one fliver of facts. And there may be more facts that, that the applicant could bring to bear that may help you see if it falls on one side or line or the other.
Yeah.
With respect to your bylaw. If you even want to interpret the bylaw in that way, as I said, interpret it in another way. I mean, you know, that was this smallest interpretation, but I didn't think it would be an unreasonable interpretation either.
So I think what we need next is true documentation of when the ownership of this property took place.
All three, all three properties. And showing that there is a common thread of control.
Correct.
And I think that it would be safe to have the applicant request a waiver also. So that may or may not be setting a rule for us in the future.
Right, we don't want that.
So they can't say we're automatically interpreting this this way.
Right. But until we have blockchain documentation of when this property, how it was all originally obtained, right now, we're just taking it on hearsay.
Right.
Can I ask, the third property is, is held in a trust by the other two?
Yes.
Oh, well, there is a commonality there.
Right, but they're lots of separate... But back in the beginning, when they did it, I think they're all together.
Well, it's like, it's like Family A, Family B created a marriage, and Family C, which is the trust.
I think we're good with this. So Byron, do you understand what we're requesting for information?
I think so. So, um, we can... If we provide the deeds of, uh, the deeds into the various properties that they are before 2009, and we request a waiver, then you don't see a reason why we can't proceed?
And any other information that would, um, show that there's a common thread of control among the three parcels?
Okay.
Or with a lack of a common thread of control?
It doesn't help his case. But yeah, so everything would come to the surface and we could accurately make a decision based on the information that the applicant's giving us. If they don't give us enough information, we're not going to be able to make the decision that you're looking for.
Correct.
Okay. So if, if we provide... I, I just want to clarify what I know that I can provide. If we can provide those deeds, um, and submit a waiver, um, I'm just trying to just to figure out if we, if we need to address this particular question the next time, or if we can proceed to the engineering questions. Um, obviously, I don't want to do the engineering unless, unless we... We're pretty confident that we're on our path forward.
Yeah, I think the board's looking for anything additional besides the deeds to prove your common thread of control, or lack of, like Jay is saying. So we need every, everything documented, whatever can be found on that. And I think we do need to have a vote for the next meeting before the engineering questions.
Yeah, we want to make sure that we're on the same page.
Yeah. We still do not have enough information to make a determination either way.
But, but the board is now has more legal information in order to constitute a particular decision that we can make based on the information you're going to give us. Meaning, we're, we're a little bit more versed on this. And I think it's, it looks like it's a possibility there, but we're not going to give it to anyone.
Correct. Jay, did you want to add anything else?
No, I'm, I'm happy to, you know, follow up with, with you all and with Bill once stuff comes to work with Byron, see if we can't come to kind of the same conclusion on everything.
Okay, thank you very much for logging on for clarification.
I got one thing.
Oh.
Just one thing to put Byron. The sooner that you have it in so it can be reviewed, that way there for next meeting, we'll have Jay or Bill to look at it. So that we have a good idea of what's going on.
Yeah, send it out.
The sooner, the sooner that we have it, the sooner that we have it, the better off it'll be. So that Jay can take a quick look at it. So that when we have our next meeting, we can all really know what's going on with it. And try to wrap it up. You know what I mean? Try to get it rocking and rolling for you.
Okay. I'll, I can provide those deeds to Byron if I'll look by client to see what other documentation she has.
All right, appreciate it. Thank you, Jay. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. So this is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience have any questions? If not, please mute your microphones. There is a ton of audio in the background. So whoever's not speaking. Um, anyone in the audience have any questions on this hearing?
Yes, this is Travis McCall again.
Yes.
I'm, I'm just curious what type of leeway there is. I know I'm talking about Step D, and you guys are still in the middle of doing Step A. Is there any type of possibility of easement getting granted through this proceeding, or...
We're, we don't have enough information at this time to give an answer on that.
Can I...
Yeah.
Travis, Bill Kundif here. What, what Byron has been asked at the last meeting to do was do a little research to see if there's any rights of ways that currently exist across the property. And if they exist, then he was going to show them on the plan.
Right. Um, I know that when this happened out in, I forgot, it was 2000 or whatever, it was a big to-do over whether there was an easement and it wasn't. So I'm not exactly hopeful that there is an existing one. So I was just wondering if there isn't an existing one? Is that where it... If, if that's where it ends? Or is it a possibility of still having one possibly granted?
I don't think we could do that.
I think there's two other landmark plots.
We'd have to show from deeds before that, right?
If there's not one in existence, you'd have to most likely talk with the landowners.
Yeah, negotiate of some sort, yeah. We can't just demand it.
But he is going to show.
Yeah, it's there.
They kind of have it where when something's being subcontracted or compound or whatever, they kind of put it where there's something that has to be done to unlandmark the land behind it. I'm not sure how exactly that works.
There's no statute.
It's in existence.
But, but you certainly... I mean, I'm not a landowner.
No. I don't think we need to...
You certainly have to talk to Jay.
Yeah, we don't need to.
Try to work something out.
It's complicated. It's complicated, yeah. All right, I... We've got to move on. Anyone else in...
No, I think Jay's on set.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's just listening.
You're just doing this for fun, Jay?
Just hanging on with Tracy.
I know. I know. Thank you so much. Um, anyone else in the audience have any questions? Okay. Board, um, we have June 11th. Is that open?
June 11th, that's up.
I'll entertain a motion on that.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing for Cooperstown Road Realty Trust to 7 o'clock on June 11th.
Motion's been made.
Right, hold... Hold on.
You wouldn't happen to know when 93 Davis is, do you? Time?
Hmm... 7...
7?
30? 7:30?
Is it 7:30?
I believe.
No, that's...
Or 7:45?
Park Road.
It's either one. It's not 7. Want to do 7:05? Do you want to do 7:05?
7:05.
Yeah.
On June 11th.
Yeah, just in case. Okay. Motion's been amended, and was it seconded?
Not yet.
Second.
Second by Mike Greco. All those in favor?
No, I need roll call.
Yeah.
Aye. Oops, oh, we do.
What's your name?
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Swicker, aye.
Aaron Sokrath, aye.
Jake Schultzberg, aye.
Okay. All right, we'll see you on 11th. Please get that information to us as soon as possible, though, so that town council can, um, review it with us. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Byron. See you, Byron.
Okay.
Okay, we'll see you.
Our next item on the agenda is the 7:30.
Okay, go ahead, sorry.
So you want to add something?
No.
Um, the 7:30 PM public hearing continued. And they did request a continuance. Bill, did you want to say anything on that one?
No.
Okay.
Do we need to put on one agenda again?
Yeah, do you know what date?
June 11th.
I saw it, yeah.
What time?
Let's say 7:45.
Want to go with that?
Okay.
Make a motion to continue the, the public hearing for William Stark, application for accessory apartment, special permit for 12 Parker Road to June 11th at 7:45.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, nope, roll call.
Okay. Mike?
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Swicker, aye.
Aaron Sokrath, aye.
Jake Schultzberg, aye.
Okay, thank you. This next item, 7:30 PM A&R plant, Todd Douglas. I'm going to recuse myself and hand the task over to Mike Swicker?
I guess I'm getting the... Is anybody here to present an A&R plan for Wollam Lake Road?
Yep.
And I'm going to recuse myself.
And Tracy has recused herself.
I'm going to stay at the table, though.
Good evening.
It's nice and cozy right here. I like it.
So that town has a piece of property on Wollam Lake Road that we acquired through tax title. There should be copies on an 11 by 17. So basically, the town had acquired this, and I was looking to dispose of it. So we thought it would be productive to subdivide it so that we could put it up for sale and get a better return on the investment. So, um, we're creating three lots. Two conforming conventional lots, and one lock frontage accepted on the back. So... Which is one and a half times or twice the... It's greater than the required, which is actually twice. Twice is greater. So... Cool.
No, no problem with access, no slopes, no grades?
They're, they're not in the, not along the frontage. There are, there are grades going from the north to the south across the lots.
Frontage is fine, though?
Yeah. Access is good. Access.
Ash tow?
Nope.
Hey, we know our ash tow from our, you know what?
Psych distance showed on the plan.
It's good, right? We're going to have you follow one side.
Bill, is that considered selling the property? No, no.
So this is, this would require a single vote or a twin vote? One for, uh...
Two votes.
Lock frontage and one for an A&R?
Correct. And is this... What's the process? So the town owns this, and the town is selling this to somebody? Well, we're probably going to put it up for auction. Right. So there's no, nothing that's been created?
Most of the areas.
Particulars, a minimum? Nope. Okay. That's cool. That's what you want to do. You want to move labs, the only... We were going to build a selectments compound.
Yeah.
A retreat.
It's a retirement retreat.
Anybody have anything to... Any questions for Mr. Bill? Any questions from the audience?
Yes.
Please take, please take your name and address.
Louis Tuzino, 12 West Street. Now, this is the third time, third or fourth time the town puts this up for auction. And they sold it two of those times, okay? And what happened was this. I have a title for that land. Okay? Okay, I have a title saying I own it.
Oh, my God.
I have insurance on a title thing. I own it. But for some reason, I don't know why, but it's my lot. But for some reason, I don't know why, but it's my lot. The town says, no, no, we own it, we own it. Now the town says, inside the papers, they say we, Mr. Tassino, everything he says is right. Well, if everything he says is right, right? Why wouldn't he own it?
What does the registry of deeds say about it?
I own it.
Bill?
If you go, if you go to the. Actually, it's not in the way. If you look at one of the references that are listed on the plan, it shows that the town took it for tax taking, which means we get the title free and clear. And it's my understanding too, through the treasurer and the assessor's office, that we did in fact have a title search done and it.
Issues. Go ready, get ready.
And it did in fact demonstrate that we do in fact own the land. So I've not seen any documentation or evidence that Mr. Tassino is talking about. And.
I have my title.
Why is this before us if there's contention on this? I mean, it seems like.
I just have one question.
Yeah.
The town, if we own it, so I mean, the town has a title on it.
The town has a title on it, yes. No, I have.
Do we have, do we have a copy of that?
We're not a court. My understanding is it's a resolved issue. And I can, I mean, we're, that's not our job here.
No, 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 no.
That's not our job.
But.
We're not, you're looking at the lines, frontage and access. That's it.
But I thought with any A&R, it's, is near ownership involved?
No, not from your perspective. You're looking at frontage and access.
No commonality with control?
Now, excuse me. I have the title. They don't have a title. They tell you they do, but they can't produce the title, okay? I have the title. Now this man came to me in a package of maybe, I think it was 1,400 acres, okay? So what happened is I, you know, I got the title. I got the title of all of them, okay? And what happened is that Bill's right, you know, it's up to the courts.
That's right.
Yeah, I didn't want to see him go to court because their last time, anything goes to court, costs the town a lot of money, do we all agree? Okay? Now, so far, this town has spent more money in courts and I don't know who's getting us in these messes. But you know, I would just say, let the court handle it. Stay out of it. But apparently, you know, Bill wants to put that up for auction for three lots.
Bill? Please Lou, come on.
That's what.
That's a ridiculous statement. It would be the highest of best use.
That's a ridiculous statement.
Right, right. There's nothing, you know.
It's the highest of best use.
Tax taking, okay? And like, I'm sorry, I just looked up, I said, Bill, 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 Bill. But you know, maybe he didn't have nothing to do with this. But I'll tell you, there's a lot of work to put into this and only somebody who knew would know how to do it.
That's all on, yeah.
But that's what we paid for.
If I can ask, the GIS map mapping, does that go through the registry of deeds? GIS mapping in the town?
The GIS mapping goes by what the assessor's show for the current.
I'm looking at that now and it says Town of Douglas owns that property.
That's right.
So that's what, I'm looking at that, I'm looking at that.
We own that property. And it's my understanding, I've been told through different departments, that this is a resolved matter. And they've taken the proper steps. There was a question. They took it seriously and they, they did the research. My understanding is it went to court. I'm not certain about that. I can certainly drill down if the board wants me to. I don't think it's your role to do that.
I think, I'm, I'm looking at this, the Town of Douglas owns it. Like you said, we're worried about frontage, the A&R plan, what's in front of us. When the town decides to sell it, that's up to the title insurance to look into it. But I'm looking at something owned by the town and the town's requesting them to divide it.
Worcester County Deeds has been able to put in the book a page.
And I agree with you Jake on that. If it's on that.
And when the town goes to sell it.
Your concerns Lou, but there again, we have to go by what's.
My concern is this, you know, everything that happens in this town, and this is the sad case. Nobody's looking at the legal bills. But I'll tell you, would be, you spend a lot of money over complete stupidness.
Can I ask this? Is this the first time an A&R plan put this property in front of the court?
As far as I know, it looks like that piece is far better than a larger piece if you ask me. I'm not certain about that.
Yeah, I'm also.
The way it's configured and goes across the street, if you look at Locust, you'll see it kind of, the lines go across the street.
And if I may ask, when was this acquired? Does anybody know? Is it '05?
By tax lead you're saying, right? By a tax.
Set forth, it was held common ownership.
Thursday.
As of May 17th, 2005.
It's in 1984. Oh shit.
Deed references. I had them add the deed references.
It was, excuse me, it was a tax.
Oh, actually, it's on the A&R form.
Is it on that? Uh, 2020 deed book. Eighty-four?
No.
Twelve, ten, eighty-four.
Yeah, that's what it is.
So is the tax taking of Moses Harris?
Twelve, ten, eighty-four.
So if you look up that under page eight, four, eight, one, three, fifty-two. That will be the tax taken.
Okay.
Kevin's looking for it. It's on the registry.
Yep.
Now, first, excuse me.
So go to search.
I don't know why.
No.
Yep, right there. Down to unindexed. Unindexed. Keep going.
Can everyone see this?
Nope.
It's an orange.
The same as the one we have here?
That's okay.
See, see, just take a look. This is an orange, okay? Now this is not the plan you got in mind here. Because Bill had it engineered.
So go to unindexed, yep, right there. Unindexed.
It's John Bell.
This one right here, right?
And then, if you can read him the book and page, the one that's really.
You see this date on here? This was done, this was done a week ago. This here one there, right there, done a week ago.
Eight, four, eight, one, page three, five, two.
Look at the dates on this one.
Yep, but that's not even the safe coverage on the lot.
Oh, it is, because the other piece comes down here.
I don't, I'm going by what, I see what you're saying, but I'm going by also what's.
Then you have to press view.
Jake just said.
You're 100%.
So on the other side, it says view image.
You don't know nothing about it? So you do, you know what I do? I don't know nothing about something?
That's the.
Right now, we're going to take a gander at this right here. Hold on, we just have something brought up.
That's about as clear as mine. I can't read that at all.
So go to the top and use the little magnifying glass.
There you go. I'm trying to record, finding Moses Harris. Who's Moses Harris?
He's the one that had it before. That was in seventy-seven.
Oh, that's before everybody. September 29th, 1977.
Yeah, that was recorded.
Recorded eighty-four though.
Recorded.
By who?
Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Two separate.
Right. Right, and that's where I bought it.
But are they, has it been suggested, and this is to you Lou, that you bought it and then the taxes, there was a lead, tax lead?
Excuse me?
We were told that there was a tax lead, a taking.
So back then, that's when I bought it. I bought it with the tax lead.
This is that whole area, again, I'm lost.
Let's bring Jay in on this too.
So the town says they grabbed it.
I think we're going to have a pretty easy answer, but you know, I'll bring that up. I'm happy to wait till the next meeting.
Why don't we, why don't we just do that? It's just another dirty thing that I'm going to deal with.
I mean, I know what you're saying, it's.
We have time, 21 days to add.
The board, we're not the court, Land Court of Massachusetts, we're here to look at what's in front of us.
Right, and right now, it's day the same, the town owns it.
When the town goes to sell these lots, that's when the Land Court and the title insurance can do that thing.
Right. Do you want me to share the screen so people at home can see it or?
It's not, it's a meeting. It's.
It's not even a continuing, it'll be on the next.
It's just an agenda item.
Well, the, I mean, do we need that?
He's in the chair. I forgot.
I'm happy to get documentation for you.
I think it's confusing. He says he's got a deed. You say the town has a deed? Jake already proved, it's online, you have Jake saying that, it's online, the town owns it. But that's, you see, the town registry stuff, right? I mean, it.
That's the town's assessor's page.
Yeah.
Yeah, the town's assessor's page. I mean, do you actually have anything that says?
Yes, this was discussed and my understanding, again, I wasn't directly involved with it. I've spoken to people in Town Hall that were. It's my understanding this is a resolved issue. The question.
That's passing the buck.
What do you mean? I mean.
That is resolved. I mean, that's a way to end the argument, right? Are we here to prove who owns it? Is that when the sale comes, if they decide to sell it, then they have to be able to pass a clean title? If they can't pass a clean title, then that would be, that would be a problem that the town needs to deal with.
The assessor's office shows it on our website. It's on Town.
So that's where I'm getting at. If it's not. Yeah, but we're here, this is an A&R, right? All we're doing is an A&R. So how can we accept the A&R if there's dispute over who actually owns?
The secret is this, an A&R. And you see, if you look at the thing, Bill, I give you that book, Bill.
Hold on. Yes, that's. Can I keep this?
Yeah, but now give it to him for a second.
Oh, Mike?
Yeah, he never seen the title. The title says that these people agreed that I own it. Now, all of a sudden, the town shows up and I ask the town, do a title. And he said, oh, we don't need one. You gotta do a title. So then, they give me this, this guy from Millbury, what's his name? You had him do it.
Rich Goslin.
Rich Goslin?
Rich Goslin.
Rich Goslin. And he comes back with this thing. So I keep looking for the stamps that I have on mine, from the registry, from this, from that, and there isn't any. So I go snooping around and I said, what do you got? Oh, we really got nothing, I mean. Well, I got this. Well, you see, now if you read that thing carefully, it will tell you that Mr. Tassino had, passes everything. He passes everything. We have the same thing he had. And then they turn around and they change the design of it.
Hold on, I'm going to break in right here for one sec. Who's been paying taxes on this property? The town, the town owns it.
I don't think Lou has.
Yeah.
How can he be paying taxes on something that's.
Not assessed.
We own it. So, so how are you not paying taxes on it then?
No, I get a lot of tax bills. I pay him all.
I mean, I'm at the flavor of the board, whatever you guys want to do. If you want to wait or if you want to have a motion.
I would suggest you go on with the auction, then I'll take it back from you and you're going to pay the damage.
Now, let's wait till the next, let's get Jay involved in this.
Yes, he would do it. He would do good on it.
I want to hear from Jay, from Jay.
Right. Help me a bit.
Do we need to hear from Jay? It's, it's a cut, it's A&R plan owned by the town.
Yeah, I'm just taking an input on Mike.
Yeah, but see, another.
But we're not, I'm not a land, I'm not going to hear this dispute who owns or that dispute. This lawyer says that it's an A&R plan.
But if we have clarity, can we can all agree, if we get clarity and we say, okay, that's the way it is, then we all can, with a clear conscience, vote on this versus.
Uh, something out there, one sec. So, right now, it's registered that the town owns it. So what can Jay do about it?
And the town attorney's going to call and say, we own it.
At the tax leads, the taking, he says, I looked into this and yes. I mean.
And that's where that comes in.
Right, I mean, we can't, we can't even read these titles. It's all.
No, but.
You know, so.
And that's where on the application, it's right there.
So if there's any level of comfort, Matt is up on the whole thing. Matt?
He signed the application.
He signed the application on behalf of the town.
Our selectmen.
Okay, so.
No administrator, town administrator.
Town administrator, so.
Have you seen this?
If I have, I don't. No, the selectmen allocated some money in their expense budget to put this forward. So this is coming from the selectmen.
Right, to move it forward.
And we're, we're here to represent the best interest of the town. I think the best interest of the town is doing what the town wants to do, what the town submitted in paperwork for us to do.
And again, I don't object to waiting to the next meeting and doing, you know, drilling down if it, if it solidifies some people.
Yeah, if it solidifies some, some sways.
So Mike, we didn't hear from you, what would you like, want to?
I guess I'd prefer that it gets pushed back or pushed ahead and whatever you look at it. But I don't know how we're going to resolve it because the town is claiming one thing and Louie is claiming the other. He claims he has the deed. Town claims they have the deed or, how do we resolve that? It's whether we take the town's word, I guess, is really.
If Jay says to me, your board, like Jake's saying, as a board, I believe that this is the way it is, you have a duty to act on the A&R, great. I want to hear it from the lawyer to say that. You know, I don't want to like us be lawyer and judge right now. I know you're right, Jake, absolutely right, that this is our duty to do this. But I just want to have a directive. I want the attorney, town attorney to say, look, you should act on that.
So what are you proposing?
Next meeting.
Continue it and have Jay show up?
Have Jay do the same thing. They'll have to come here.
Okay, I'm offering that.
Does the applicant have a problem with it going to June 11th?
No.
No?
It's got to be done before July, end of July.
Yes. One way or another, we have to have it resolved next.
Next month.
We have to resolve it next meeting. Yes.
Now, keep in mind.
Yes.
Do I really care? No. Because this is the old story, the title company, which I pay them for insurance.
Yes.
You know how that works, right?
Yeah.
They have to pay me, okay? So the only way I can get it is to say, you guys are right. And they'll say, okay, the town says they own it, they'll chase it down and they'll say, hey, you guys are right. We have to pay Louis Tassino. Then if they say, you guys are wrong and you divided all this and you sold it and everything else, then they're going to say, now you got to pay Louis Tassino.
Yeah, but when it, what Jake was saying, if it goes to transfer to a different owner after this happens, then it's, it won't transfer. It's not going, if you, if you're the owner, it's not going to transfer. What do you mean? Meaning that if.
It'll be a cloud on the title.
It'll be a cloud on the title. They won't close.
They won't get a mortgage.
Yes.
If it's at all possible.
Yes.
Please, so what you guys are just voting on tonight is to subdivide the lot? Or basically break it into three parts?
A&R. All it is, an A&R endorsement. That's it.
It only becomes real when it's recorded. If they move forward on that.
Well, it causes them harm if they sue, if I do win, if I get lucky. You guys.
That's what I'm saying. It's split right now, Jake, I mean.
It only becomes real when it gets.
Bill doesn't mind waiting one week?
Yeah, I don't mind waiting one week, but I'm not here to play the games.
I understand both sides. Can we please put the town's A&R plan for Wollom Lake Road, map two, thirty-six, lot two, to June 11th? With some advice or clarity, I'm sure, and Town Council, please?
Invite him in as well to the meeting, you know, not here physically. Invite him in as well to the meeting, you know, not here physically.
And I know what Jake's gonna say, that we're just supposed to worry about an A and R and not the legality.
That's our duty.
But to be fair with the membership, I'd like to have some input. Where there's no need of opinions on this.
Oh.
Somebody has. You want that? You don't wanna give that? That's my coffee.
That's your coffee.
No, that's mine. That's the only one that's here. I don't have one.
Nice to see you also.
That's the one I handed Mike.
I handed this to Mike.
Bill handed that to me.
Did anyone see that other coffee?
wires at all?
That's the only thing I got.
There might be some down there.
That came from Bill.
If you want, Lou, I'll just one zero off of it.
No, we got none of them in the office. I'm just surprised. I had two of them, didn't I?
No, you maybe only have them.
We have them there and no man's.
Yeah, that's mine and I gotta move to get at it. I gotta move the table.
So, we're all good on, we're all good on June 11? Yeah, it's not a hearing or anything.
No.
So, let's get rolling back to our agenda so that we're not here all night. Okay, board?
Yes.
Mike?
Yep.
Mike G?
Tracy is back.
Okay, I'm back. Next on the agenda, 7:45 PM, public hearing continued, BWC Whiten Reservoir LLC. So, we have an application for public shade tree permit, site plan review permit, scenic road permit. Okay. Jeff, do you wanna take us where we left off from last time?
Sure, sure.
Name and address, please.
Basically, this is Jeff Murphy here with Fields and Thomas representing the applicant, BWC Whiten Reservoir LLC. It's fun to give the board an update on where things currently stand with the various applications. So, we had received a draft, kind of updated, site plan review comment letter that was basically Bill's progress responses to our letter that we issued previously on March 10. I believe that there's a few things that he's still taking a look at and I would imagine would be issuing a final letter sometime in the coming weeks here. A major outstanding item that we currently have is the review of the stormwater. I know that there have been some delays getting the proposal kind of signed and fully authorized account had been set up and all the funds had been provided for the furnished, you know, funds for the peer review. So, that's basically ready to get going as soon as that document's signed. And then, in terms of the other two applications, we had basically been leaving these shade tree and scenic road permits open just as kind of an incidental in case there was anything that came out of that stormwater review that might affect work in that area, just to kind of, you know, make sure that we don't have to rehash anything there. So, that is basically where we currently stand with things.
Okay, and Bill, did you receive?
I recuse myself on this.
Okay, let the record show. Mike Swicker has recused himself from this hearing. Did you receive the hard copies so that you could review those grades to the basins?
I did, and I went through some of that with Jeff today, as a matter of fact. Also went through my letter. There's really only one area of my comment letter, my draft comment letter that I circulated at the last meeting that I still wanna take a closer look at. It pertains to Section 5 of the zoning code, basically the environmental performance standards. I wanna make sure that those items were adequately addressed. So, with regard to my letter, that's the only outstanding thing. Stormwater, obviously, as I indicated to Jeff today, we're looking to send that out for review. Probably gonna get it signed tomorrow. I expect the contract for the peer review and then they'll get going on that.
Which item, the Section 5.4 requires the number 16 in the letter?
Correct.
Certain considerations pertaining to environmental performance. Jeff, you're on top of that, right, as an additional?
Yeah. So, we had provided some responses to that in our letter that was dated March 10. And I think Bill was just gonna go through those a little more thoroughly and kind of evaluate the adequacy of those responses that we provided to address those kind of Section 5 comments.
So, the reason behind that is when I made the initial comment, I did it in a broad manner. I spot checked several parts of the Section 5 requirements and I saw certain deficiencies in that. So, I put a blanket statement that, "Hey, take a closer look at Section 5." They responded with that response you see in the draft letter there and they really didn't go through a thorough response. It was pretty much, we did everything that was required. In a nutshell, that's what they're saying. And I know there were deficiencies that I had seen when I made the original comment, so.
I guess specifically, Bill, what items? Are we talking about the things that say like noise, solid waste handling, miscellaneous standards, 5.4.4? I guess is that the area that we're talking about here?
It's, again, Jeff, it's Section 5. That's my general knowledge.
The whole Section 5? The whole of Section 5?
Okay, I believe that we provided, you know, obviously, we provided pretty, you know, we did provide written responses to all of those comments. So, I guess we'll listen or we'll wait to see what your kind of take is on those. And we'd be happy to elaborate on those comments as need be. But we kind of just need to know what your issue is with those responses.
I agree with you.
So, just to clarify, this response from the March 10 letter from B and T is not sufficient for the considerations in that Section 5? Is that what you're saying? So, that you've read this response from May 12?
Yes.
And these are not satisfying your concerns with considerations pertaining to the performance?
Generally.
Generally, okay, okay. So, Jeff, you're just going to wait until Bill says elaborates on that comment or did you wanna take another stab at it while we have some time?
Yes.
I don't know what it says.
You know, in terms of the Section 5 comments, so, I mean, I'm seeing things on here starting with, you know, Bill's comment. I think, again, I think we realized the numbering on our letter got messed up by one after a certain point in the letter. But I think Bill's first comment is 13 where it talks about sufficient parking spaces. We provided exhibits in that March 10 response letter that documented the parking that we're providing for the construction vehicles, which I believe was 20 vehicles in the lower area. We provided a whole breakdown of the estimated number of cars and, you know, 40 worker maximum. We provided exhibits showing that you could park, let me see, I'm just looking through the exhibits we provided. I think it was 20 cars you could park down below. Yeah, I mean, there's definitely, we provided two large kind of contractor parking staging areas. One of them was about 8,800 square feet. The other one was 3,000 square feet. There was kind of a lower area that was closer to Oak Street and then an upper area, kind of on top of the hill, that was another 3,000 square feet, you know? And we showed that that capacity existed there. And we provided that and those exhibits. Vehicle circulation, I mean, again, it relates to the same thing. I mean, there's plenty of space interior for the site for vehicles to park and circulate. We provided, you know, ring road access around the entire array. Pertaining to, I guess, yeah, loading, we talked about that. Section 5.4 was the most kind of comprehensive, I think, which was the environmental performance stuff. So, we provided a response to the noise section where we were saying that the electrical equipment will generate some noise during the daytime solar production, will be negligible given the distances from funding residences. The nearest home is approximately 780 feet away. Much of that distance consisting of a wooded bumper. And, you know, during construction, vehicles will be temporarily generating noise during working hours, generally between 7:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. We talked about solid waste handling. We mentioned that the project is going to have to provide a permit coverage for the U.S. EPA construction general permit. So, they're gonna be required to submit a stormwater pollution prevention plan, which is going to mandate that the contractor basically needs to have adequate trap receptacles on the site to address all those types of things. So, again, there's some others here with regard to lighting. You know, I think the only lighting is a small activated motion light near the equipment pad area that'll be facing downwards. You know, that would not be on. There's no lighting proposed for the array, you know, at night. It's just gonna sit there idle and then.
So, to that point, if I can jump in, Jeff, so you don't have to get through all of that. So, a couple of examples. The lighting is one. Parking lots are required to have lighting in the bylaw. Either you do it or you don't do it. If you don't do it, you have to request a waiver, okay? With regard to, the parking lots are supposed to get durable macadam. I'm not sure if it says paved, let's see.
Well, I guess it's a parking lot only in a sense of during construction. So, does that mean that if the end use is not a parking lot, the end use is a solar generation facility, so does it, does it apply if it's just temporary for construction and then it just?
So, I would suggest you probably wanna request a waiver.
Okay.
Yeah, that's where I was gonna go with that. Anything that.
You know, but this is the point. So, I've seen a few of those kinds of things in Section 5.
So, straight from the bylaw is what needs to be addressed, all the items, the details, like the lighting. And maybe you thought that that was just a temporary parking lot, but it wasn't clear that you would not need the lighting or it wouldn't be a parking lot in the future because we don't know. You could end up making it a parking lot. Right?
Yeah, I mean.
That's just one example with the lighting that's required for the.
Requesting, yeah, we'll take a closer look at it and request any favors as may be necessary.
Yes. Okay.
And I think the only other kind of update to provide is I think the applicant has an update just for the board on kind of the discussion for the pilot agreement. So, I guess I'll turn it over to the applicant to kind of just give a quick update on that front.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, everyone. Jackie Firsty from Blue Way Solar, BWC Whiten Reservoir. So, basically, we sent over a draft pilot agreement to the town about two weeks ago, a little over two weeks ago, and the town administrator, the assessor, and the town council reviewed it and sent us back, you know, their response. They were good with it. They were happy with the rate, happy with the overall agreement, some tiny tweaks, you know, to be made, but overall, they're happy with it. And they said, you know, obviously, it's once you guys approve it, then we'll talk with them, but they were fine with it as it is right now.
Awesome.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
No problem.
And decommissioning estimate?
Yeah, I had a conversation with Matt, I think his name is? Matt, is it Matt?
Yeah, it says Matt.
Okay, yeah, basically, as we've done on the other projects, we actually put that as a condition in the approval and then we deal with it after.
It's in the minute.
Okay, all right.
It's a condition.
Okay, board, do you have any questions on this?
Just get the answers and move forward.
Bill, do you have anything? Audience, anyone in the audience like to have any questions or comments on this hearing? Do you have any, Mike?
I got a couple.
Okay, name and address, please.
Mike Swicker, 46 Oak Street. For the lower parking, all the low boy offloading and loading, where are you gonna be doing that for all the low boy trailers? I know you're gonna have to drop a couple in the beginning to get through, but there's no intent on doing all the loading and offloading on Oak Street, is there?
No, no. Basically, that lower area is just kind of an initial parking area until they're able to get the road kind of built up to the top of the hill. And then, everything's kind of going up to the top of the hill and then they're gonna do all the offloading of all of the racking and various equipment that's gonna be used to build the array. They're gonna be doing all that truck offloading up at the top of the hill there and not along Oak Street.
How wide's the opening gonna be? Do you know?
So, yeah, we've got that, we've got a wider opening for, as a temporary construction apron. That is pretty wide. That's like almost, that's like over 100 feet.
Good, okay.
120 feet wide. So, it's been designed, we've run turning templates for tractor trailers, be able to turn in and out.
Oh, I know, you don't even need it. The only other question I have is, did you see the pictures that Bill had on the water where across the little Oak Street?
Pictures, I didn't see any.
Yeah, I posted them on the link, Jeff.
Just to make sure that when you do that driveway opening, you don't increase that flow.
Okay, I think I see these here.
Because remember, you said at first, a couple of weeks ago, that there's no water that crosses over Oak Street? I very much beg to differ on that aspect. And that was just one little rainstorm.
Photo one, photo one and photo two, right? So, those photos are taken of water that's on the east side of Oak Street, correct? Like, that's where it would be. So, you were talking about a culvert, right?
No, those aren't the pictures.
Those are the ones showing the street. There are four. If you scroll down a little more. No, keep going.
I can't see that part. Sorry.
Yeah, that's. So, photo, I see photo four.
Those are the four you said.
Those are? That's on the one side though. If you got more.
So, when I visited the site, from what I remember, Oak Street is crowned, meaning that the center line of the road is a ridge. So, the water is not going up over the ridge from one side to the other. It's flowing off either side of the road down into the gutter line. So, that flow is like gutter flow on the side of the road, correct?
No, I'll make sure the pictures get to Bill. The water crosses over from one side to the other. It goes from the east side to the west side. That's not the, that's further down, those pictures. But there's a clear picture of the water crossing from the east side of the road to the west side of the road.
I guess, what specific point does it cross? Does it cross your house, Mike, or?
No, no, way up before Susan's. Right where your driveway area is, just after it. You know where the driveway is across the street? Not Shirley's driveway, but the next one? Right around there is where it crosses. And I don't see the picture up there, so maybe it got lost in translation, but I'll make sure that you got a picture of it. Through Bill.
Are we good with the pictures, guys?
Yes. Yeah, and I think they could, after seeing the pictures, maybe propose some mitigation if that is, you know, the rain event happens. What would be in place to avoid that?
Yeah, so I think, yeah, I think certainly, you know, we're gonna propose, you know, perimeter sediment controls to, you know, contain what's coming off of the limit of work. We're gonna have that crushed stone apron there and things.
Okay.
That's good.
Photos would be helpful.
Yeah.
Okay, anyone else in the audience have any questions or comments in regards to this
Yeah, I have a question.
Oh.
Excuse me.
Okay, all right.
Those photos that we looked at that show the water and the drainage dishes?
Yeah.
Is that an everyday event or is that when we have a monsoon or what?
Whenever it rains.
Whenever it rains? Not necessarily long as downpour.
I can say that we had some serious runoff issues in that area probably eight or 10 years ago. And we had to put a culvert system and divert things across private property to a flood plain, basically. So, it was a pretty extensive solution, but that's a little further down past Mike's house.
Yeah.
But it was intended to address the amount of flow. And the flow is pretty uniform in that culvert.
It's just wet.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else? Yes, yeah, sorry.
So, I was wondering for the board's consideration and the applicant's consideration, if there's a preference to, we talked about the telephone poles at the street previously. It's my understanding that they can get by with having one pole and then putting the rest of the equipment on a pad-mounted, you know, structure. And if that's possible, is that something the board would prefer to see as opposed to those?
The group of poles?
Yeah.
Yes.
Those nondescript, unifying poles.
Yes. Definitely.
Nothing like a Dagmont or something.
Yes.
Fifteen poles by the street. Oh, yeah.
So I guess it's a question for the applicant if that's doable. Jeff?
Hi, everyone. This is Matt Carlon from Blue Wave. Just jumping in. So regarding the pole placement, our poles are usually just, they're one point of interconnection that just tie in to the street level, and we're actually in the final stages of getting National Grid's actual intended structure as to how they plan to interconnect this system. But it's usually just one pole, and then the next poles are going straight back into the site. Would that still be of visibility concern to the board?
I don't know what he's saying.
I'd have to like see it.
Like you'd have that same pole out of the street and then, I don't know, 30 feet back, another one. Another pole, another pole.
Single poles?
Correct, yeah. So it's not, it's not a huge cluster of poles up at the frontage of the site. It's one pole up at the frontage, and then they're going back along the access road.
I don't see why not.
So if we're that far along on the discussions, is that something you could show on the drawings?
As soon as that is available from National Grid, happy to, happy to share that, but they're just in the middle of their study period, and it's kind of unclear when they'll have that finalized and prepared. But as soon as that's available, happy to share that with the town.
Matt, you seem to have a little bit of handle on that. How far back is the first, next pole after the initial pole at the street, roughly? I know you still have...
Exactly. So you can have one pole sort of near the frontage just so that it can connect to the nearest pole, and then the next pole, they can span, you know, about 100 feet. So, and sometimes more so. So we have a history with National Grid, especially if the town mentions it. Happy to talk to them during the staking process of those poles and just express, we've done this in projects previously, just express that the town's desire to have those pushed back a little farther, and they've usually been able to accommodate, and I'd be glad to do that here, too.
Okay. Board, you all set? Okay, audience, all set still? Okay. Do we have a time for this, Bill? Want to do, I think it's 7:30.
Last one we did was...
Want to do 7:50?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to continue this hearing. Two.
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing for BWC Wynton Reservoir, LLC, Blue Wave Solar.
Two.
To June 11th, 7:45, 7:50 p.m.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. All of them in favor?
Aye. Mike Swickor, aye.
Oh, Aaron Sokrad, aye.
Jake Schultzberg, aye.
Tracy Shurkey, aye. Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Jeff.
Okay. Do we want to take a look at future meeting dates?
Chair, I'm back.
Okay. Welcome back. You gave us these two calendars, Bill, right?
No, you should only have one calendar.
Oh, I had one from last time.
Empty.
No, there's some writing on those take-in dates. July 2020. You'll see the days that have text are the days we cannot meet on. So we're looking for one day because we normally meet once a month.
Well, who the heck knows?
Um, well, we're in July, right? So I would do not the week of July. Do the 16th or the 15th?
Sure.
15th?
15th, Wednesdays?
Are Wednesdays preferable to Thursdays?
Yeah.
Okay, I don't care either, but I know last time.
So people can go on a four-day weekend, yeah.
Yeah, we have, we have.
Yeah.
Try to stick in system with that.
I would say, why?
We need a motion?
Well, so are we going to do, oh, there's no August.
15th is fine.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, we're good with that. My shady Noel Estates monuments update.
Okay, we solicited pricing. I did put a summary sheet in your packet. If you want more detail, you can go to the link on the agenda that I emailed out. But in a nutshell, we're looking at four submittals. Andrews came in low at $445 per pound and 28 pounds. The highest number of pounds, lowest price.
Okay.
And that's Andrews survey?
Andrews survey, yeah.
They probably surveyed half of those.
And the timeframe? Is everybody the same timeframe on completion for these? Like completing the task?
Is there like a thing?
There's no...
Is it open-ended?
It's open-ended.
Okay.
So they could... They don't want, so it won't be two years when they're done?
It won't be two years. No.
Can we do by, can we do by the end of the year? So 2020?
We need a motion on that one?
Yeah, I would say.
Make a motion to accept the bid offer?
Recommend Andrews.
Recommend, and, yeah.
To, for Matt to sign.
For the total of 28 pounds, monument pounds, through Andrews survey?
For the town administration.
I wouldn't mind doing some kind of time recommendation.
12 months?
End of 2020?
12 months, give a calendar year.
What time, what the?
Is it matter fiscal year for them or the money purposes?
No, this was a separate article, so it's all set.
Yeah, separate, yeah.
12 months.
12 months?
Yeah, sure.
That seems all right?
I'd say before this comes frost, but I can...
They don't do it in a few months.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would, you could do by the end of the year.
Put it in there, that feels good.
Is this one of the items on here?
Well, what's going to happen if they don't?
Right. I mean, what are you going to do? Make a recommendation?
Yeah, everybody done by the end of this calendar year.
It'd be good for the frost.
It's just a recommendation.
I like that, yeah.
Like to have a recommendation that they try to have them done before the end of this calendar year.
Okay.
As a recommendation.
Okay, motion's been made.
Second.
Second by Mike G. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mike?
Mike Swickor, aye.
Mike Swickor, aye. Aaron Sokrad, aye.
Jake Schultzberg, aye.
Okay, thank you. Earth removal, special permit guaranteed builders. I'm going to recuse myself on this one. Mike, can you take over for me? Thank you.
Bill, where are they on this?
For a second.
We got a revised surety submitted and town council approved it for form. We have a check. Basically, it extends the access to the surety and access to the property until next May. So we should be in good shape.
Good.
So I think we're all set with that. Accordingly, I don't need any formal action. Actually, I will need you to release the current surety that we have in lieu of this surety being posted. So I'll need, I'll need a vote on that. Make a motion. This is for Glen Street, 37 Glen Street. Release the current surety and replace it with the surety that's been submitted, the cash surety that's been submitted.
So as that's said, so moved?
Second.
Need a roll call, Bill?
Mike?
Mike Swickor, aye.
Aaron Sokrad, aye.
Jake Schultzberg, aye.
Mike Swickor, aye.
Great, thank you. Thanks. The ASBILT, just so you know, the ASBILT is coming along. I've got a pretty final version of it. There's a few spots that there's over excavation. I don't think we need to pull it up, but basically, it's similar to the spots I circled on the plan. So when we get to the point of final release of the surety, we're going to have to basically approve the over excavation areas.
Or are they going to address the situation or it's up to them?
No, it's all loaned and ceded currently. They're not going to change anything. So you guys would have to be okay with the over. It's not significant.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, all right, just minor.
If it was at the base of the site, I'd be concerned.
Yeah.
It's on the side, so I'm not as concerned.
It looks good.
Yeah.
From the street, and it's ceded well. It's all coming in green.
Nice.
Tracy Lee, okay.
Yeah, she...
What do we have next? The ZVA application request? A special permit?
What's that? Who wants the ZVAs?
Yeah, there's two of them.
Any takers?
I'm sitting there, I'm in the chair right now, I guess, so I'm out of there.
I'll look at one.
All right. Jake's going to take one.
Number one or number two, Jake?
And then there's two, another ZVA application request.
I think you can't read both, I'm going to look at them both anyways.
All right. There's actually three. I think one's grouped into two. Two is grouped into one.
McIntyre 478 East.
While we're waiting, Mike, do you want to do the minutes?
You'd like.
Sure, please. Which one, Monday, May 11th, May 13th?
Actually, I've got to go all the way back to March 10th.
March 10th.
I saw nothing wrong with it. Is there anyone else?
I think that's the one I wasn't here at. That's the one I wasn't here at.
Absent, Mike Swickor.
Yeah, so I can't vote on that one.
Okay.
March 10th.
We already did March 10th.
I thought we did March 10th.
We did March 10th.
Yeah.
Things are getting through and that should have been...
You think that one's already approved?
Yes.
Yes, because, yeah.
And the only one that's listed is 430, and we also did get in 511, and that did not get on the agenda. But I, it's on the link if you want to...
Well, we have, we have 513.
513, we got.
513 was not on the agenda, you can't vote on.
Yeah, we just got, plus, we just got that today, I don't think...
You have the April one...
April 30th.
...you did last meeting, but you didn't act on it.
We didn't, that's right.
So this is next week.
We could tonight, but it's not.
Because it's on the agenda. Doesn't look, Mike.
April 30th, looks okay to me. Anybody have any input?
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah. It was discussion anyway.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for April 30th, as written.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. All of us in favor?
Aye. Oh, Mike Swickor, aye.
Mike Swickor, aye.
Aaron Sokrad, aye.
Jake Schultzberg, aye.
Okay, thank you.
Catch on here. sooner or later.
ZVA application?
Jake's got it.
Okay, great.
I'm looking at one McIntyre over on Northeast Main. Side yard relief of four feet, making it 11 feet for basically storage bins for their current operation. And it's going to, it's like a safety issue that they're having over there, make it more accessible one. Don't see an issue with it. That's one. Like their narrative is all in the back.
Do you want to sign that? Board doesn't have any objections to that, right?
Nope.
10 Huff Road. They did a whole narrative for it.
Nice.
This one here so far, house down on Huff Road. Non-conform instructions, structures looking to extend their roof to cover the patio that they put together. So they're not building any walls, just extending the roof.
How far relative going? About? Does it say? 20.
Do not see. Haven't got that far yet.
Sometimes there's a roof that's two feet, sometimes it's 20 feet.
It was drawings, but it doesn't really show exactly. No. Aaron, you might be better looking at those drawings than I am.
Yeah, so that page with the narrative, you can see what was provided versus required at the top of that chart. So they've got existing...
Provided 94 for frontage 200. Required 90,000, they have 16.
Okay.
Setback. Required 50, they have 35.
Existing, right? So it's non-conformally existing. They're extending it not, I mean, they're extending the non-conformity, they're not...
Well, he's going to get to the backyard.
Side yard setback, require 25, they have... I hope that, I don't know if that's five feet or five inches, but lot only 60 feet wide. Rear yard setback 25, they have 150.
Okay, is the roof going to the rear yard? Is it on the back of the...
There's kind of a current roof over patio. Yeah, we have an existing roof, and we want to cover it. The narrative doesn't say, but...
Yeah, so it's a special permit to extend an existing non-conforming structure.
Is it going to the side? You're saying they're already non-conforming to the side?
I would.
They're non-conforming to everything except for the rear.
And which side do you think that the patio is? Is it to the rear or is it to the side? Have they extended the roof over?
If I had a drawing...
People need to be more descriptive.
Yeah, just a random roof drawing, but not like a picture like the house.
I mean, you don't want to, I mean, ZVA is going to see it, but you don't want to intensify it too much.
Hmm, no.
And then the butters.
Yeah.
So it's not, in the narrative, it doesn't say in the rear, the side.
We could just say that we don't have enough clarity to make the recommendations.